Well, good evening, everybody. We're going to go ahead and get started.
We get the, sorry, two seconds to get the presentation up.
You're good, you're good. Hey, Dr. Peoples. Okay, excellent. Well, good evening again. I am Dr. Marie Peoples, City Manager, and really pleased to be able to do this and to visit with you all tonight, certainly not under the circumstances with COVID, but I'm glad that we could make it work with people being on Zoom and in the room. Hopefully, we have some public watching as well. But I want to extend my congratulations, and I mean that, to those of you that have decided to run for council, run for mayor. Local government is incredibly important to me, and there's nothing more important than municipalities, local government, and the impact that they have on communities. I, myself and other communities, I have held local positions on school boards, which education is near and dear to my heart, but I share that because I know the difficulty in the signature collection process, the, the learning, and really just extending yourself in a way that perhaps you haven't done before if it's your first time running. It's hard work. It is really hard work. And so, the door knocking and everything that goes into it. So I truly do appreciate your interest in being part of Webster Groves in a different way. So, again, congratulations and welcome. So with that, we're going to do introductions for folks that are online as well as within the room. So on screen, and the names are just listed in the ballot order. So we'll go ahead and start with the current councilwoman, Laura Arnold. And if everybody would please, and we'd like to keep it just to a minute if we can, so we can stay on track for the night, and so that we can do what we're here to learn about the city rather than have it be a candidate form. So if you all would just take a minute, excuse me, share your name, how long you've lived in Webster Groves, and why you're interested in being on council. So, thank you. Councilwoman Arnold?
Thank you, Dr. Peoples. As she said, my name is Laura Arnold. I am finishing my fourth year as a member of the City Council and running for mayor. I have lived in Webster Groves forty-some-odd years, and am interested in being, continuing to be on the council and serving the role of mayor, to continue to help our, our community move forward and to continue to think about how we can be more responsive and transparent for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Ms. Hart?
Good evening. My name is Kathy Hart, and I have lived in Webster. I'm giving away my age, a little over fifty years. I went to school at Holy Redeemer in Nerrings and earned my law degree in the early nineties. I served on the council for twelve years and am interested in serving again in another way.
Thank you. So we'll move to those candidates for council, and I'm not sure, of course, with COVID, it's just played a little bit of havoc, so everybody's not on. And I think, as everyone knows, and just to reiterate for the public, that there's two opportunities for tonight. So if people aren't here, they will join us on this second educational offering. But we have Emily Hickson Shepherd. Ms. Shepherd, are you on?
She is not.
Okay. And then I don't believe, oh, there's the names for me. So we'll just go then down to Mr. Eppers.
How you doing? I'm John Eppers. I have lived in Webster Groves for the last ten years. I was born and raised in Shrewsbury. My wife is currently from Webster Groves, and she's been moved there since nineteen sixty-eight. I'm interested in running for a city council because I built a garage a few years ago, and there were some issues with some building permits and stuff like that, and the size and stuff. And I think we need to get together as a community and revisit some of those billing, billing restrictions and codes, because I believe everybody should be entitled to have a three-car garage. And, you know, I know certain lots will allow it, but that's one, that's my main reason for running. I think we need to revisit some of the city codes and what people should be allowed to do as a homeowner.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you sharing. Ms. Beck?
Hi, I'm Karen Beck. I have lived in Webster Groves for thirty-four years, recently retired after almost thirty-eight years as a former city employee. And I decided to run to be able to share my knowledge as a Webster Groves resident, as well as a former city employee, to help shape the future of this amazing community.
Thank you so much. So if we do have other candidates that join us, depending where we're at, we'll certainly try to go back and, because we want to make sure everybody knows the candidates and meets them, and here's their minute as well. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move forward in the agenda, and it is my pleasure to turn it over to the city attorney, Neil Bruntreger, and he is going to share many things about the city charter, the rules, responsibilities. You going to stay there?
I'll stay here.
I will mask back up.
Okay. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Neil Bruntreger, and I'm glad to speak here from the dais as opposed to from the podium, because I didn't want to turn my back on all these people that are here. They make me nervous. For those of you who can't see, of course, we have all of our directors who are here tonight also to speak to you as well. So I want to talk to you briefly about our form of government, which I think is a generally misunderstood form, and some of the operative documents that I would recommend that you all become familiar with as you go through the campaign season itself. First and foremost is the city charter of Webster Groves, which, if you haven't seen it, it is, it is online. It's easily printable. I have a copy that I carry with me all the time, and that is the document that, of course, establishes all of the powers that are available to you under Missouri law. It is, it, it recites the powers of the mayor, it recites the powers of the council, it recites the powers of the city manager, and it gives you definition for all of the various governmental departments. There are a few other documents I do want to recommend to you, though, or readings perhaps is, is, is a better term for it. Both of them are published by the Missouri Municipal League. One of them is titled Manual for Newly Elected Officials, and I strongly recommend, if you have not seen that, that you go online and find it. It, again, is titled Manual for the Newly Elected Officials. The most recent one was actually done in August of 2020, and it's published by the Missouri Municipal League. It does say on the front that there's a price tag of twenty dollars. However, you can, you can print it. You can find it online in a variety of different places, and I'm not sure who to give the twenty dollars to, but if you're really looking for someone, you can give it to me. And so, and I'll make sure it gets to the right place. Trust me on this. This is, again, August of 2020. The other is a little bit dated. It's June of two thousand and seven. It's, again, a publication by the Missouri Municipal League, and it's titled Forms of Government for Missouri Municipalities. It is also an excellent document and really does an analysis of all of the various forms of government. And in particular, it has a good description and, and discussion of our form of government, which is sometimes called the council-manager form of government. Sometimes it's referred to as the weak mayor form of government. But essentially, what we have is we have a council that serves in a legislative capacity and a policymaking capacity that basically delegates to a city manager the day-to-day operations of the city. And that's what the, the very short form is for the city, for, excuse me, for the council-city manager form of government. All of those things are defined, not just by the, the documents that I've described, but also by state statute. So, again, we are a charter city, meaning that we have a different stance than, than most. There are, I think, thirty-eight charter cities in, maybe thirty-five, but thereabout charter cities in the state of Missouri. And it, there, there are certain powers that we have as a charter city. But in the creation of our charter, we set out the rules and regulations according to the powers that are given to us by state statute. And generally speaking, it's Chapter seventy-eight of the state statutes that define, again, what powers are available to us as a, as a city itself. I will tell you that there are distinct differences between the powers of council, of course, and the powers of the city manager. And I want to focus on those for just one moment, again, in a very general sense. And we'll say, as I already stated to you, that generally speaking, the council, of course, establishes policy. And the council, as part of its, its responsibilities, also has a duty of appointing a city manager. The city manager works for the council, answers directly to the council, can be discharged by the council at any time, not just for cause, but for any reason. Now, again, what that means is, and the reason I point that out, is because you have to understand that, again, there is a pecking order. Council is, is above, and the city manager responds to the council. However, you have delegated to the city manager the day-to-day operations of the city itself. And those are very, very bright lines that need to maintain their separation. And so I point that out to you, because, again, while you do have control, you ultimately have the decision to hire and fire. It is still a control that is defined by both the charter and by state statute. So, let me read this brief statement to you that is found in these publications, and it says, "The council manager form is only available to third-class cities." We are also a third-class city because we have between four thousand, and I think it's thirty thousand residents. Chapter seventy-eight, as I indicated to you, the Missouri statutes controls what is, or what are the powers in a, in a council-manager form of government. We are a home-rule charter city, and many home-rule, who, home-rule charter cities utilize the city council-manager form of government. And typically, typically, again, the, the charter itself is going to outline what everyone does, and it's going to follow what we see in the state statute. Under the council-manager form, there's a differentiation between the policymaking function of government and the administrative function. So the administrative function, of course, is, is that which is the responsibility of the city manager. If you look at the charter, you have to recognize that it will spell out very specifically what the duties and the powers are of council, and very specifically what the duties are and the powers are of the city manager. However, you have to read charter as an organic document. You have to look at all parts of it in order to understand what it really means, because when you start to look into information about the various departments and the directors, you will find that all of those folk are answerable to the city manager. The city attorney is hired by the city manager. So, again, the power and the role of the city manager is, is something that, that, again, has to be understood. And I tell you this so that you also understand one of the things that our charter does in terms of limiting the communications that you, as policymakers on council, have with the directors and with the employees of the city itself. We actually have a non-interference clause, and this is very common. It's not specific to Webster Groves. We have this everywhere. And basically, what it says is, is that, again, you're the policymakers. The day-to-day operations are the responsibility of the city manager, and you should not infringe or step upon those powers in any way, shape, or form. And if you do, you can be subject to removal from council if, if it becomes egregious enough. Now, why do we do that? Why do we say that? We say that because we're, again, are trying to run the city in some ways as a business, as best it can be run as a business. And we want to make sure that the directors and the employees of the city itself know who they are answerable to. And so what that means, basically, is that if you, as a councilperson or as the mayor, were to come to a director and say, "I want you to perform a task for me. I want you to do a job for me," and you have the freedom, if you had the freedom to do that, that would create a problem, because they're not answerable to you. They're answerable, of course, to the city manager. And so, under those circumstances, there would be a question about where the authority is and to whom they are supposed to answer. And so, in order to clear that up, in order to clear that up, we say simply that there's a chain of command. If you, as a councilmember or as the mayor, have questions, if you have information that you want, you don't go to the directors, you go to the city manager, you go to the assistant city manager, and you say to them, "This is information that I feel is critical. I feel is useful. Please provide it to me," and she or he will make sure that they get the information to you. So, again, that is important because it protects the employees, so that their alliances aren't torn, their allegiance, their, their loyalties aren't tested. It's a situation where they have a clear person that, that they are going to answer to. And, again, we, we do this in order to protect the employees. No purpose other than that. This is a conversation, by the way, we've had with, with and under every city manager since I've been here, which is not very long. I've been here since December of eighteen, but, of course, I served under Steve Wiley, and I served under Joanne Giudoli, who was the interim, and now I have the pleasure of serving under Dr. Peoples. So, again, it's very important that we understand those distinctions and how they lie. When we look at the duties and the rules, and, again, they're outlined in the charter itself, you will see that the, the duties of a council are very generic, but they are policymaking, and they are essential to the operation of the city. You will decide the direction and the path the city ultimately takes, and it is you who gives the direction to the city manager to ultimately implement the policies that you would enact. I will say, for a mayor under a weak form of government like we have here, or, excuse me, a weak mayor form of government like we have here, the mayor's role is very different from what we see in other types of municipalities. So, the mayor is a councilmember, just like everyone else. They are recognized as the mayor, but they have no greater duties or responsibilities or authority than any other councilmember. They are one of seven votes. They sit and they control the meeting, and as the person who controls the meeting, they also can control the agenda to a certain extent. But beyond that, their, their role is purely ceremonial. In the absence of the mayor, the mayor pro tem, in this case, councilperson Arnold, is the mayor pro tem, will act in the absence of the mayor. The mayor has no veto power. Again, they are simply one vote among the seven. What they do is they run the meeting, and they are the ceremonial head. So that's a very, very big distinction between what we see in other forms of government. But it's important to note, because, again, the mayor, while the mayor runs the meeting, the mayor is simply another councilperson, and, and they have no greater authority than, than you as, as a councilperson would have. Okay? So, I, I will let you read the publications. I think it's better to sort of peruse them, and I would encourage you strongly to look at the other forms of government, to understand the difference and the distinction between those forms of government. It will help you better understand what you do here and why that is different. Having said that, I will open the floor to any questions that anyone might have about the form of government or the powers or the separation of powers. Okay. Seeing none? Hearing none?
Did you want to go through the managers?
Yeah, let's do that real quickly, if we may. So, we have prepared these things, and this is found, again, in the charter, and it's found in the state statute. Of course, the, the charter states specifically the city manager is the chief executive and the administrative officer of the city. So that means the day-to-day operations are the city manager's responsibilities. Now, I will tell you, just as an example, when the mask mandates question came up, that was a decision that was made by the city manager. She brought it to council and said, "This is what I'm going to do," and that's a matter of courtesy, and that is done, has been done every time there has been a significant decision made. But that is a decision that gets made by the city manager. Same is true with the vaccine mandates, which we have implemented. It's a situation where council is made aware of the decision to do it, but that is a day-to-day operational question, and that is the responsibility of the city manager. When we look down at the various powers, the city manager will appoint, when necessary for the good of the service, remove any officer or employee of the city. So we have two classifications of employees. We have classified and unclassified. The directors, all of the folk who are here, are in the unclassified capacity. We, that means that we serve at the pleasure of the city manager. We can be removed for any reason, except for the chief of police, who cannot be removed for any reason, because state statute says he can only be removed for cause. Okay? But the rest of us don't enjoy that sort of protection. So we serve at the pleasure of the city manager. The most important, well, I say, and maybe other people would disagree, but the most important responsibility of the city manager appears from the perspective of the city attorney and a resident of Webster Groves for thirty-three years, is to prepare the budget annually, and that's quite a challenge, as I'm sure you can all guess, if you've not been part of that process. That not only has to be prepared, but submitted to council, and then ultimately, the city manager is responsible for its administration after its adoption. Pardon me. You're also going to prepare and submit to the council at the end of each fiscal year a fiscal report, financial report, that spells exactly what's happened in that year. You're going to keep the council advised of the financial condition and future needs of the city. You're going to serve as the director of at least one department, and in this instance, I think you serve as the director of two or three departments. Maybe four. So, again, we, we have, like, personnel, for instance, and others. She serves as the director of. She is to attend all the meetings of the council, and, again, that's something that she has done. And while the city manager has a right to participate, of course, in the discussions, the city manager has no vote. You have to see that all the laws and ordinances are enforced, and that all the contracts and franchises are faithfully performed, and perform such other duties as may be prescribed by this charter. So, again, in, in eight simple steps, it breaks down the responsibilities of the city manager. And it would take eight hundred pages to actually tell you what that actually means. Okay? So it's, again, it's a very, it, it's a very generic description, but it's an all-encompassing description. The, she has, the city manager has the authority to delegate certain responsibilities and duties. That's within her purview, and she may do that. Could you go to the next slide from here, please?
That is it?
Okay. So, those are the powers of the city manager. The powers, again, of the council are a little broader. There's probably twenty-five or twenty-six categories. You know that, that's been the same recently. That's something that's granted to you, not just by the charter, but also granted to you by state statute. So, all of the things that are in the charter itself are consistent with state statute, and all of those things are consistent with the Constitution of the state of Missouri. Now, I tell you that because you have the ability to make policy, but any policy changes that you make going forward must be constitutional, and they must not be inconsistent with state statute. So, everything gets looked at, and I use this word before, but I use it again in an organic sense. We don't operate in a vacuum. We have larger rules by which we operate. And, again, you are operating under the authority delegated to you by the legislature of the state of Missouri, and so we play by rules. Part of my responsibility is to make sure, if you're going off into an area that goes outside those rules, is to make you aware of that. Okay? So, again, if there are no questions, I'll turn it over to the next speaker.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, now I would like to turn it over to Emily Hickson Shepherd. And so, thank you for joining us, and don't, I saw you perk up. So, we had some technical difficulty, which was not Ms. Shepherd's fault. Thank you for driving in. I know you planned on being on Zoom. So, thank you for being here. And what we did is, we had each candidate just give one minute. It was very brief, and just share your name, how long you've lived in Webster Groves, and why you're interested in being on council.
So, yes, I'm Emily Hickson Shepherd, and I've lived in Webster since 2013, however long that is. It's late math. But I also kind of grew up spending a lot of time in Webster. My grandparents, both sets of grandparents lived in Webster, so I have long-term connections here. And we live over on Oak Street, so that's part of, you know, we've been, we were pretty involved in the conversations around the redevelopment project, and so that gave me more exposure to city government and the inner workings, and mostly working, talking to the community and trying to get good information out there, and I really enjoyed that. And thought I'd like to be part of whatever comes next for the city and, and moving in a positive direction.
Thank you. So, Mr. Peterson, if you would go to Slide six, and let's look at the organizational chart. So what you see there is the city org chart, and we've got the directors here with us this evening. Some of the managers are online. We're trying to keep the, the crowd pretty light, but we're going to have some brief presentations for you, and then, again, some opportunity for question and answer, of course. So, we've got, of course, your primary departments, fire department, police, public works, parks and recreation, planning and development, human resources office, which is not a department, but it is an office. And then, under this assistant city manager, he oversees the finance departments, information technology, public affairs and engagement, municipal courts, and then there's prosecutor's assistant. And then, the way that the org chart is, if you look at it, the city manager and city clerk, of course, you see there to the left, and then even further to the left, you see the county, city council, of course. And then, most importantly, we see the residents of Webster Groves, because we're all ultimately answerable to the residents of Webster Groves. And so, I like the way our org chart flows in terms of, of how that goes. And we have other, more internal org charts in terms of who our customers are and how each of us serves those customers. So, we can share more as we go through this, and really, again, appreciate you guys being here tonight. So, the next slide, just shares. We've got ten departments and offices, and then the number of full-time and benefited employees, and, of course, part-time, non-benefited employees. It fluctuates. It certainly fluctuates depending on season and what's occurring, but right now, we have a hundred and fifty-five, which is pretty typical. And then, in terms of our part-time, non-benefited employees, about a hundred and fifty. Okay. Any questions on that before we get into some of the presentations? Anybody online?
Okay. Is that pretty consistent with what it's been, or have we seen an increase or a switch between full-time and part-time?
It's pretty flat. It's pretty flat in terms of full-time benefited employees. Um, of course, our summer seasonal employees, that, that does go up, just with summer parks and rec operations. So.
Manager Peoples, if I can, just briefly, the non, the part-time, non-benefited employees, that hundred and fifty number is about a swell number for the summer, which is our biggest selection of time when we have those fat folks in. So, it's a smaller number at this moment over the winter months.
Well, I think first up is Jennifer Conrad, who's going to talk about the city clerk's office. So, the city council has two employees. That's myself, and then, of course, the city clerk is the other employee that reports directly to the city council. Ms. Conrad? Alrighty. Yes, so the city clerk's office is made up of the city clerk, which is Katie Nakazono, who you may all remember from filing or other wires. And she is a certified municipal clerk with the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. And then, I am the deputy city clerk, and I've been in training towards getting certified, but I am not yet certified. The city clerk, as Dr. Peoples said, is appointed by the mayor and city council. That's in the charter. And then, in the code, it's, the council designates a deputy to perform the duties of the city clerk in her absence. So, that is the role I fill. Our primary duties of our office, which are assigned by the charter and the code, probably one of the most important ones is the job we have with the mayor and city council. We prepare the agendas and the backup for the city council. So, we get things from the departments, and we assemble the ordinances and resolutions and things like that, and we get those out to the public and to the council members and mayor in advance of the council meetings. Right now, we have iPads they download onto, but we also, there's various ways, just to make sure everybody has all of the backup in advance of the meeting. We do the preparation of the minutes for the city council. We also maintain records of the minutes, ordinances, and resolutions, all the way back to eighteen ninety-six. And so, we have those in various formats, and, you know, have to dive into the archives on a fairly regular basis. The city clerk also serves as the custodian of records for the city. There are additional custodians in the court and also in the police department, but everything kind of funnels through the city clerk. There's a form online, and then people also can come in and make requests, and they can get quite voluminous. They're also sometimes maybe referred to as sunshine requests, you might have heard of. So, people, we, we get a lot of those, and so there's a lot of document assembly. And then, she also serves as the election official, which means, you know, the parts you guys have already interfaced with, like she prepares the packets and gets petitions certified, but then she also does other paperwork after the election and puts, works on things for the other ballot initiatives or, like, the use tax that might be on there. And then, in addition to those things that are assigned to us by the charter and the code, we do a wide variety of other items. We arrange the board and commission interviews and maintain the rosters, which doesn't sound huge, but ends up being, we have, I think, eighteen, maybe nineteen boards and commissions, so it's kind of a huge task of keeping up to date on who's going off a committee or who's serving on different things and just making sure everybody's up to date. I serve as the liaison to the Arts Commission, which, if you're not familiar with that, that was formed in two thousand and six, when we got the backflip piece down there. And, you know, in the years since, we have gotten various other pieces of public art. We've formed a couple of different groups. They've got the lifetime achievement in the arts. They have some poetry celebrations. They've become a pretty active committee. Should we also process liquor licenses? We do them annually, and then also, anybody who comes in new, asking for a liquor license or temporary, like, events. We also process daycare licenses. Then we do the budgets for the city clerk's office, city council, and boards and commissions. I serve as one of the website administrators. We do, we draft proclamations and resolutions. We draft ordinances on occasion. And then, our primary thing is that we just liaise between the mayor and city council and the community. Because the mayor and city council are not full-time positions, we're really the ones that people talk to the most often. If they call into city hall, they get one of us. When somebody sends an email to the city council email address, it comes to us, and then we distribute it out and make sure everybody gets the information, and that that person gets responded to. So, we're really a primary contact for citizens who are looking for the mayor who are looking for the mayor and city council. And I think that's really about it. Are we getting questions now or are we doing questions after?
No.
Okay.
I will point out that the resources that they have, both Jen and Katie, are simply remarkable. Their ability to generate information, their ability to produce it in a very short period of time is really essential, particularly on the sunshine law requests, because that's a huge part of what government does, and that's to make sure that information is available to people who are interested in it. And so Katie and Jen are remarkable in terms of their ability to find it, their ability to determine what it is that should be transparent, what it is that might not be. Again, it's, they make my job infinitely easier because of their expertise.
I like history and knowing stuff. It's fun.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Mara Perry, Director of Planning and Development. Ms. Perry?
Good evening. Mara Perry, Director of Planning and Development. We're gonna go ahead and go to the next slide and just briefly talk about our department. So our department has essentially a couple of different arms. We are one of the smaller departments. We only have eleven staff. The question was asked earlier about how we've stayed pretty flat. Our department has actually gained two staff members in the last year, and that's a pretty substantial change for us. We had gone from only nine staff members to eleven due to the increase in construction within the city. So there are now an additional permit technician as well as an additional building inspector to cover all of the work that we've had done and have ongoing within the city. You can see I have a building commissioner, and he is overseeing currently the two permit technicians, code enforcement, building inspection, and a plan reviewer. We also have a city planner and an additional administrative coordinator within the department. We have essentially three different arms. We have our building division. The building division covers plan review, permit issuance, and inspections. All of that covers both residential and commercial construction within the community. We do occasionally do inspections of city projects if they are projects that would have required a building permit. We also have staff that serve on the architecture review board. That meets twice a month. The number of items that go through the architecture review board compared to some other cities is pretty substantial. Some communities only do brand-new construction or commercial. We also do additions in garages and other things over a certain size. We've made changes in the last few years and have exempted a number of things and have actually decreased the number of items that have to go before the architecture review board. Our second arm is more of our housing division, which a lot of people call our code enforcement. We are responsible for doing the housing inspections across the city. This is inspections of houses for sale or houses for rent. We also do inspections of all the apartments on a third of the units of each building every three years, essentially. And then we have an occupancy permit system that's been in place through the international building code, through the existing structures code. When my staff is not reporting their occupancy inspections, they are responding to complaints essentially or monitoring various neighborhoods. We have a complaint system that comes through, and it determines whether it's something that might possibly be a violation. The only way to go forward with it is to document it ourselves. So if it's something that we can't see, we go to try to see if we can document it, if it is documentable. And it is a true violation. They send letters, and then eventually sometimes have to go to court. And so they deal with maintenance violations and nuisances. We then have a third, which we kind of call, it's a smaller arm and yet a bigger arm, the planning, zoning, economic development. We only have the one planner in addition to myself. We work together for Planning Commission, Board of Adjustment, and Historic Preservation Commission. That arm sort of handles rezonings, conditionally used permit applications, works with zoning on new construction projects, anything that needs to go through the larger step. But it also includes little things like bees, pigs, and chicken permits. We also deal with fence permits. We deal with short-term rentals, anything that really comes together with all of the different code elements related to the community. And then I just threw a couple of things up there. It's kind of hard. We've been doing an annual report, which I know you can find on the city website. Our numbers did not go down during COVID. They actually pretty much stayed steady or increased. So typically, and this is an average over the past five years, we've issued between thirty-two hundred and thirty-nine hundred building permits each year. We've performed somewhere between sixty-six hundred and seventy-two hundred building construction inspections, which was the need for an additional inspector. We inspected between seven hundred and forty and eight hundred and forty homes for sale or rent every year. So those are some of the numbers we've been working with. Our new home numbers did go down a little bit during the last year or so of COVID. I think that the lack of materials coming in for construction has slowed that down. We still came up with, I think our numbers are at about seventeen new houses, which again is pretty enormous for the community of our size. We've also had some really big projects recently, the Hickson addition, moving the sixth grade over to the middle school. We, the finishing up of some of the other bigger projects that were in commercial buildings and renovations. And so that's our planning and development department. Any questions?
Did you say pig permits? Sorry.
Say that again.
Pig permits?
Yes, you can actually have a teacup pig in the city of Webster Groves.
Okay, but no goats, right?
No goats.
No goats.
No goats.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Curious.
Well, there's an asterisk on that.
You can do, we did change it so you can have the goats that come and can eat your grass. And that is in there. But no, there were some health issues with the goats on neighboring properties. We just don't have the size lots that we're able to deal with it.
It's not a platform of mine.
But pigs, you're all behind the pigs.
Pigs are totally fine. How does like, how does it compare to other municipalities? Like busyness-wise, do you feel like Webster's about the same as other places? I know you said it was different for ARB, but in general.
So it's interesting. I came from the city of Chesterfield. And when I was there, there were six planners. So it's a pretty substantial difference between the type of construction. You know, in Chesterfield, you have really big swaths of land that you can continue to develop. So Maryland Heights, Creve Court, Chesterfield, they have a very different aspect of what they're working with. I know when I got hired for the job, I was told I was going to be bored because I was so used to doing an entire outlet mall, you know, doing really, really large subdivisions. It's a different kind of busy. We're not dealing with, other communities have playing commission that meets twice a month, and our playing commission meets once a month. Other communities have ARB that meets once a month, and we meet twice a month. So it's just kind of a flip-flop. But I will say that since I, so I've been here nine and a half years. It'll be ten years this summer. In that time, our numbers have just substantially gone up in terms of just keeping a comparison of the last fifteen years. So I would say we are a little bit busier than some of the communities around us, a little bit busier than Rock Hill or Crestwood or even Kirkwood in some ways. They're busier on houses, new, single-family. We're not as busy on those. But I think we have a few more businesses with new construction on the interior renovating older buildings. Even during COVID, I think we had four new restaurants under construction. So it kept us, it keeps us very busy.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Now, under, under the COVID plan, how many new houses did they actually build in the city?
So we had seventeen new home permits issued in two thousand and twenty-one. The year prior to that, I believe we were at like twenty twenty-one. And the year before that, we were at like twenty-six. And those were the highest numbers we've seen in fifteen years, even when it was really busy prior to that. So it just kept going up exponentially, and then it started to kick back down. We've seen a lot more people doing renovations, and those numbers went up during COVID.
And a lot of people built garages during that time, too?
Yes. Yep.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Okay, Chief Curtis.
Thanks, Dr. Peoples. Good evening. Dale Curtis, Chief of Police. But we've included a couple or three slides. Give you some basic information. I'll try and expand on it a little bit. But there is a lot of information to go through. You can see our flow chart. We basically have three different offices or divisions. There's my office where I'm myself and two other employees. Then we have the Division of Field Services, which has a captain that commands it. And then the Investigation and Support Division, which also has a captain that commands it. You know, that's all right. Thank you. The Office of Chief of Police, we have the Administrative Coordinator. She has several duties. She is General Receptionist, first party point of contact for the public. She also does records, payroll, different administrative jobs. And she also isn't just really in the chief's office. For anyone that needs administrative assistance, she really is the only person we have that's an administrative person for that type of activity. Division of Field Operations, you know, for our patrol. We have the captain again who does that. We have two squads that work twelve-hour shifts in patrol. Each of those are managed by a lieutenant, and each squad is supervised by a sergeant. In the Division of Investigation Support, we have the Traffic Unit, Criminal Investigations Unit, Community Oriented Policing Unit, the Records Unit, and the Prisoner Transport Unit. There's quite a different entities in the support services. Obviously, the Traffic Unit does traffic, a lot of our traffic enforcement and targeted enforcement, criminal investigations, does follow-ups on reports. Our Community Oriented Policing Unit includes our School Resource Officers. We have one officer assigned at the high school, and we have one officer assigned at Hickson. The Records Unit does our police reports, insurance companies, and attorneys, courts, whenever we need the records, they handle that. That would be the Records clerk. Our telephone and radio communications are contracted through the East Central Dispatch Center. We're consolidated. There's eight cities in the dispatch center. It's located at Richmond Heights. And we also have our prisoner housing and transport services are consolidated there, the East Central Dispatch as well. The next slider. Thank you. The primary functions of the Police Department. The number one is protect life property through the enforcement of laws and regulations and proactive patrol. Everything that follows is really a byproduct of that. But also, that doesn't really accurately reflect the philosophy and our service that our officers give to the community. Our culture and what we expect from our officers is really to focus on quality of life issues, providing service to the community. We also try to avoid as much as possible the criminal justice system. Anytime we're dealing with people, whatever the issue might be, we try and find solution, problem-solving, and solutions outside of the criminal justice system. We use mental health services, social services, and those kind of vendors to help us with those. Obviously, respond to calls for police services. We conduct preliminary and follow-up criminal and traffic investigations, prepare reports, arrest and transport process criminals, testify in court trials, review legal documents. As I said, the School Resource Officers take an active role in the community. We have a good partnership with the school districts. We also have a partnership in terms of their expense. The school district pays seventy-five percent of the school resource officer's salaries. In the summer, they come back to us to help us patrol during the summer. So we pay that twenty-five percent basically when they come back to us. A couple of things as far as the department. Again, the professional services, which was on, Eric, I'm sorry. I meant to mention this, I forgot.
Back one?
Yeah, back one, please. Actually, go back to. Let me skip one, one more. Our professional services lieutenant is our accreditation manager as well as our training officer and public information officer. The department's just recently received its sixth accreditation. We're assessed every three years, and they've recently gone to four years. So we were first accredited in two thousand and four. We've been continuously accredited since then. We received the meritorious and flagship designations as an accredited agency during that time as well. So he is responsible, responsible for those.
Is this last one?
Yeah. That's kind of it, the outline in brief form. If you have any questions, we'd like to answer them. Yes, Karen?
What would you say are the most demanding issues for the Police Department right now? Is it staffing? Is it any particular calls that you're responding to?
Well, we are, as you know, we're a bettering community. So I mean, the biggest issue for us really are quality of life issues. I mean, we deal with, as far as crimes, you know, the biggest issue is property crimes. We have, unfortunately, and it's not unique to us, there's a lot of car break-ins and auto thefts that are going on in the metropolitan area. It's really difficult to police for those. So it's one of the difficult things we have. We give a really big bang for the buck in terms of our staffing. We have the lowest racial, ratio per thousand in any of the East DC cities by far. We also have the lowest racial per thousand for many of the large, larger cities such as Maryland Heights, Kirkwood, Bridgestone, those kind of cities. So, but what we do is we distribute our personnel and our patrol according to where our needs are at. We basically analyze where it's happening and how it's happening. So we try and concentrate and focus on putting people where we need them, need to put them. The other issues are, I know all of our officers are CIT trained, criminal incident, incident training, I mean, sorry, critical incident training. So they're trained in behavioral health issues, how to intervene in those kind of situations. Things like the Great Circle and Eppworth, those kind of issues are always very difficult. But our officers are trained to handle those. We try and divert those to social services. Those are probably the two biggest things right now, are those kind of the mental health issue kind of thing and property crimes.
Are you having any staffing issues?
We are staffed, we're a couple people short right now, but it's not something that we have planned for. So not, not really. We really have the adequate staffing to provide the type of policing that we need to provide.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, I just want to personally thank you for your services that you provide to this great city and the way we can feel safe every day.
Thanks.
I really feel this is one of the safest cities around.
Thanks, I appreciate that, and so do the officers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Excellent. Chief Ellis.
Good evening. My name is Brett Ellis. I am the new fire chief. I've been here three days. And so, but what drew me here to Webster Groves from Houston, Texas, was the community and the reciprocal relationship that the fire department has with this great community. Now, the fire chief's role is, in a nutshell, is to create opportunity for our people through strategic planning, sound decision-making, maintaining fiscal responsibility, to develop them so we can continue that excellent service delivery to our community and citizens, which they've come to expect and deserve. That our firefighters and paramedics, our officers and battalion chiefs deliver a level of service that this community expects. And it's not just during the emergency call, but it's before and after as well. So we are the people to come fix your problem as best we can. Chief Boehner has been my co-part, is my assistant chief here, so on day three. But as a, as the fire department, we run, we have thirty-eight line personnel. We have three battalions, three shifts. We have nine firefighter, paramedics each day, and two captains. So you respond to your fire EMS, rescue, motor vehicle accident calls. My house smells funny. We're going to come there, and we're going to check it out for you and try to solve your problem best we can, what we got. We also have, we do inspections, crews do inspections, public education. They're not just in the schools, but they're in the community because they truly care and love their community. And so as our firefighters work two days on, four days off, forty-eight hours straight, and off for ninety-six on that three-shift battalion. Chief Boehner listed our apparatus that we have. We have one medic unit in service all the time. All of our firefighters are paramedics, so we have ALS capabilities on fire trucks and the ambulance for transport. So we staff one aerial or quint and an engine out of Station Two, which I know when Firehouse Two is completed, that's going to be fantastic. That's just one obvious connection to the community to have approved that for that great build. We also staff that ambulance and a battalion chief every day, who's the shift commander. We also staff that ambulance and a battalion chief every day who's the shift commander for the day. But again, we provide a number of courses for our community. As new fire chief, I'm kind of look, listen and feel the next three to six months is to learn the culture and also identify some areas that we're excelling and some areas that we need to work on as I bring my experience there and passion. So I'm very passionate about reaching out, not just to our community members as far as the children, but also junior high fire setters or our highest fire setting group. High schoolers have a lot of options when it comes close to graduation. Fire service career is amazing to build a relationship with the schools in the area as well. Building a relationship with the Police Department for active shooter drills and such like that, the time we live in. Knowing we have some assisted living or retirement communities that we provide some fall slips and trip prevention courses. So just some other things we can do for our people as well as we, as we continue to work with our neighbors that border us in a mutual automatic aid agreements. They help us and we help them from a fire and EMS perspective. So any questions for me?
I just want to say a special welcome to you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Webster Groves. Glad to have you here.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm excited to be with a lot of like-minded leaders. And that's one of the reasons that drew me, drew me here halfway across the country. So I'm excited to be here. Thank you for that.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would echo that. Welcome. And then just a kind of a question curiosity. Do you have an idea of how many of the, of your staff live in Webster and how many are outside of Webster?
I'm not sure how many live in Webster. They're based on some of the schedule that people, some people do live further away. But when it comes to staffing, people come in and work extra. So our trucks, our apparatus are staffed accordingly.
Of course. Yeah, no, I was just.
But I'm not sure. I couldn't tell you that. I'm not sure that number.
Put me in, Coach.
Talking peoples. She might have that information.
One. Okay.
I bought a house just in Shrewsbury, just across 44. So I'm really close. I'm four minutes away.
Cruiser counts. Well, then two. No, it all, it all counts. And we appreciate you being here and we appreciate your firefighters.
I'm excited about it.
Are you a fire department or a fire district?
So we are, it's municipality.
Yes.
So the city of Webster Groves.
Okay, so it's a department.
It's a department. Yes, it's not a fire district.
Okay. But if something happens, you'll go over to Shrewsbury and help them and Rock Hill, then they'll come assist you as well?
So we have automatic aid agreements with all of our bordering fire departments. So for apparatus and staffing, they'll come help us and we go help them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Ellis. All right, Mr. Ray, Public Works.
Hello, I am Todd Ray, the Director of Public Works. And I am over the Public Works Department. We have a total of 21. When we're full, we have a total of 21 staff. Our street department right now, we normally have 16 employees. We are down to 14. We were down to 12, but we did hire two new people recently. And our long-term, well, our mechanic has been here for eight and a half years, just left. So now we are looking for a mechanic and we're still looking for one street maintenance worker. Right in the middle of snow. So it's going to be a fun winter season. The snow that's coming tonight is not going to do anything. People, don't be afraid. It's going to be very dry and it's going to be less than an inch. So. So in the Public Works Department, there's two departments. There's the Engineering Department, which has five employees, myself included. And then the Street Department, which has normally 16. Right now, we only have 14. Move to the next one. So engineering, we handle the waste contract for the city with waste management. We also do the sewer lateral insurance repair program. We do the construction and maintenance projects. We bid them out for mill and overlay projects, any bridge projects, culvert replacements and other things. We oversee the excavation permits for anybody digging up the street or the sidewalk. You gotta get a permit to do that, make sure they put it back to our standards. We do in-house design for our street repairs. The mill and overlay is in-house design. And then we bid it out and it's contracted out to be, do the work. And then we also work with all the other departments for any other engineering needs. We work really close with the Parks Department and I'll talk about that in a little bit. The Street Division, we maintain all the streets throughout the city. We handle the storm emergencies, which is both in the summer, we have trees down when there's, you know, heavy storms and wind and that blowing trees across the roads. We got to clear the roads. And we had a ton of storm damage this year. And Dr. Peoples came up with a great idea that we should chip all that wood up or split it into pieces for firewood. And we have been storing, putting that out in front of our Service Department building and residents can come anytime and take all the free wood they want. And it's been going really well. So we've almost gotten rid of everything. We're close. So we also do snow and ice. We, when we do the chip seal program, we didn't do it this year, but we help with that. We do all the trucking of the rock and everything and all the labor. And we hire a contractor to put down the oil and, and then spread the rock. We do the ramps and sidewalks at the corners, the accessible ramps. We install those in-house and that saves the city about, oh, about $800 per ramp to do it in-house rather than having a contractor do it. We maintain all the city vehicles except the big large fire trucks. They contract that out. We do streets freeping and striping. We reseal and stripe city parks, city-owned parking lots. We handle all the street light standards. We maintain five traffic signals. We just upgraded the signal at Newport and Kirkham and the signal at Glendale and Elm this past year. Those are finally getting wrapped up. We also remove dead and dangerous trees. We have an arborist on staff. So he makes those decisions of whether a tree needs to be removed or not. We fill potholes, replace street pavement on plumbers cuts for the excavation permits. And then we offer other services to the other departments. Go to the next one. So our challenging right now, challenges right now is our staffing with the winter season coming up. We're still being short two people. So we're pulling staff from the Parks Department to help us out. Some CDL drivers, so they'll be helping out with the snow plowing when it's needed. We shouldn't need to plow tomorrow morning. So. And then successes that we've had, the Engineering Division has applied for and received federal grants for several road projects, bridge projects and sidewalk projects. We have the culvert at Elm and Kirkham is in, designed to be replaced. And we are applying for a federal grant for that project. It's a $1.5 million project. We're asking for 80%, which would be just over $1 million to help offset the cost of that. And then this past year, we've replaced all the walking paths in Blackburn Park and Ivory Crockett Park with new six-foot wide concrete paths. And that was with, in cooperation with the Parks Department. So, and we save them a bunch of money doing that in-house too. So. That, any questions?
I'd just like to say as a former member of the Public Works Department that the department does and provides a very valuable service in many different areas. So I very much appreciate the Department of Public Works.
You were there for 38 years.
I do have a question though, and maybe it will be addressed later. So regarding the potential upgrade to, to the culverts to improve, or I should say decrease the flooding on Kirkham. Has the Department of Public Works looked into obtaining any type of grants or any type of cooperative agreement with MSD to alleviate that flooding on Kirkham?
No, MSD wants nothing to do with any of that. But we do have funding sources from MSD that will help our costs on the, on the Elm Kirkham project. They have the, it's called OMCI, Operation Maintenance Construction, something. Taxing funds that they tax based on your watershed and the watershed that that culvert is in. We have about $200,000 that we're going to be able to use towards that culvert as the city's portion. So that's going to also save us money when we, and we're, we're about 99.9% sure we're going to get that federal grant based on our application and the scoring that we have. We're, we're in pretty good shape for that.
So what about stormwater funds? Can it be applied to that too, to reduce the overall cost?
Well, yeah, I mean, replacing the culvert, because the culvert that's there now is undersized. And that's what the design found. And so that is a restriction and that causes the creek to back up and then come out of the banks and out onto the, to Kirkham. So we're replacing that. It's a single culvert. We're going to replace that one with a triple box culvert. So that will get the water through that area quicker. But then you still have the, the culvert at Gore and Kirkham that is very restrictive there. And that's where the biggest problem is right now. So that'll be the next one that we'll look at getting replaced since it's not, it was going to be replaced as part of the Douglas Hill project, but as you know, that has gone by. So. So now the city has to look at doing that one. And we'll also apply for a grant for that one also.
Thank you.
I got a question about Big Ben Road. When you come into the city limits.
Uh huh.
Is there any improvements in the near future for that where you gotta?
Talking about it, Barry?
Yeah, right here, Barry, where you gotta go from two lanes to one, go make your right turn.
So Big Bend is not a city road. It is St. Louis County maintained. So St. Louis County did all that. So they are looking at doing something there. You know, that, that utility pole that's right there? They're looking at moving that off, taking that curb out, making it two lanes up to Grant and then dropping it back to one lane in each direction. So, so they are, that's in the works. So.
Is there any kind of reports of how many accidents are actually happened there over the last?
I don't have that. That would be Chief Curtis' issue.
I just want to say I appreciate your creativity too, like the wood program. But also I think you, y'all do the decorations at Christmas, don't you too with?
Well, that's the Parks Department does.
Isabel Parks. Well, I appreciate your creativity. No, it's nice to see, see that downtown.
And they, and they, they take, you know, down trees in that and make them into those reindeers and other tree, Christmas trees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's nice.
Yep. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Chief Curtis, is there anything that you could add to Mr. Effers' question? If not.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Davis, Parks and Recreation.
Good evening. Scott Davis, Parks and Recreation Director. My department has 20 full-time employees and at a full staffing. We're short one right now. We moved someone up to promotions. We haven't backfilled that position yet. And we've got another employee who's on their last week. So we'll have two openings as of Monday, but we'll look to fill those as quick as we can. We also have 21 full-time equivalents worth of part-time employees. That means I've got about, right now, I've got 102 part-time employees that work about 43,000 hours a year for Parks and Recreation out in the parks, doing maintenance out there and obviously at the rec center, maintaining that facility and checking folks in. Next slide, please. So the Parks Division, we were lucky enough in April of 1999 that the residents approved a half-cent sales tax for Parks and Stormwater. Not every city around has that, but it's a very great tax fund. 80% of that taxing goes to park improvement and 20% goes into stormwater improvement. That's the way the ballot language was written back in 99. That 80% brings in about $835,000 a year for park services. And we use all that money in the parks themselves. It does include some, about 35% of that goes to staffing needs to pay the, the people that are doing the maintenance in the parks. Another 30 or 40% of that goes to just supplies and equipment. And then we have about $100,000 a year that we use for capital improvements, putting in new playgrounds and things of that nature. 20 parks, which is a lot for 22,000 people. Most cities don't have a park for every 800 people. So we're gifted there. In the 40s, 1940s to 1960s, we had quite a few homeowners that donated their land when they passed away to the city. And that's where we got a lot of those parks. So a lot of their corner neighborhood pocket parks came from donations back in the middle, middle of last century. 121 acres of parkland and then we've got another 45 acres or so of city facilities and right-of-ways that we maintain. And then we do all the beautification services for the business districts, which is quite a bit. Holly decorations, plots and plants that are put out all year long. And then we do snow removal for those business districts. Hopefully not tomorrow, but we'll see. Recreation Division, Community Center opened in 1994 with the Aquatic Center and the Ice Room. And then in 2008, we added the Fitness Center and Meeting Rooms. We were just awarded a grant last fall for $475,000. We're going to put an addition on the front northeast corner between the parking lot and the meeting rooms. It'll be for a studio, fitness studio, dedicated fitness studio. We don't really have a fitness studio down there. So currently, we use a lot of our meeting rooms, which then we can have meetings in there. So hopefully this will alleviate that and we'll be able to have more business meetings or baby showers, things of that nature in there and then an actual good spot for fitness classes. And then we are hoping to ask the residents for a no-tax increase bond issue in 2024 to renovate the Aquatic Center. We've got the oldest fun pool in St. Louis County. Prior to us, all of them were just your rectangular Olympic-sized pools. So we were the first one to add slides and lazy rivers and things of that nature. So being the first, it's just the oldest. So it's, it's time to, to renovate that beauty and, and fix it up and, and bring it into the current trends. A list of a lot of the projects that we've done so far in this fiscal year. And as you can see, we have many more coming up this spring. So we've done some work at Ivory Crockett. We have more work to be done at Crockett Park with playgrounds, pavilions. The Park Service Center is getting an enclosure, hopefully this spring. That's out for bid right now. Some new hot water storage and things of that nature, upcoming projects. Oops. And then last slide. So a couple of strengths of our department. Longevity and passion of our employees. Out of the 19 folks that we have on staff, we've got 275 years worth of experience. So that's 14 and a half years average, 15 years median. So I'm one of the newbies at eight years. So if we can get you to stay three years, we got you locked down. But we've got some turnover. One of the challenges is hiring, sorry, is hiring and retaining our non-supervisory full-time staff. So those frontline and maintenance employees and things of that nature, we've had a bit of turnover. It seems like every 18 months or so, we're rolling one or two of those positions over. So COVID has certainly impacted that for us. It's made it harder to hire both full-time and part-time staff. COVID's also dragging down our revenue sources at the rec center specifically. People aren't coming in for fitness classes and fitness memberships and things of that nature right now. So that's certainly impacting our, our revenues. We are dropping our expenses along with those, you know, if we're not paying for a yoga instructor because we're not having yoga class because nobody's coming in. So I believe right now our revenue is 36% and our expenses is 33%, which we're halfway through the year right now. I would hope that our revenue would be a little bit higher, but we're still facing some of those COVID issues. That's what I have for you. Happy to answer any questions. Seeing none. Thank you all.
Hey, Mr. Peterson.
I'm going to stay right here in the seat since we're going to, so we don't have to move folks around. And for those on Zoom, you'll see me in two seconds. There we are. So Eric Peterson, the Director of Finance Administration and Assistant City Manager. This is just a brief overview of a department that has many different functions. Very small units that are within the department, but important functions overall. We obviously, as you look on the blue side here, internal services, we have judicial matters, public affairs, and then much of our business and economic development function. And an org chart would have lots of different lines and dotted lines to describe our department. So I figured it best to describe it this way. Obviously embedded in the name is finance, budget, accounting, purchasing issues in the finance division headed by our finance manager. And it's a really good team there. Also, information technology. Obviously, technology is key to a culture and a workforce in today's age. And so we have that division. Public Affairs and Engagement, which is our newest office here at the city, is Director Starkey reports to me and she'll be speaking to you shortly. Then also I'll go to the bottom side in the Business Development, the Business Districts, which formerly were with the Planning and Development Department are now my job to work with those folks. So special activities permits as well, uses of economic development potentials with the districts. So special activities permits as well, uses of economic development potentials with the districts, handle those operations. The Municipal Court and Legal Departments, I want to highlight for you, the charter does call for obviously a legal department. Both the city attorney and our prosecutor are both contract staff to the city. So I do not oversee legal in terms of, you know, being a director and saying to the prosecutor, do this, do that. But I am the person on staff that the legal department has to come to with issues and to make sure that safety and welfare and culture and performance issues are addressed in the legal department, which is namely our prosecutor and the prosecutor's assistant. And then the Municipal Court, under the rules of the Supreme Court of the state of Missouri, is overseen by the municipal judge, James Whitney. The municipal judge is appointed by the council, but obviously is not a full-time employee here to help the, the court staff with any issues they are having throughout the day. So that is my job as their main conduit. If there are any issues, I work with Judge Whitney on those issues. So again, much in finance and administration, for those of you who are familiar with the city, the Office of Human Resources, which formerly reported to my position, is directly overseen by the city manager. So. So I will, I'm going to pause for questions there. I know that was quick. We'll go through a budget one-on-one. I'm sure there's lots you want to talk about or hear about in budget, but just as an overview of what we do, I'm happy to answer any questions.
What is the IT department or area kind of look like?
Certainly. So there are, there are three staff in IT. We have a manager and then two staff, one of which is DIS Coordinator. IT handles all of our functional technology issues. There are outside of staff, very happy with our staff and comfortable. We do have, we have significant tech, in my opinion, I'll be very clear, in my opinion, significant technology issues at the city in terms of upgrades that are necessary to sort of bring, and COVID has really evidenced that. We're an organization that was not able to go to work from home. We don't have access, even I can't log in to find the budget information of the city in our internal systems from home. And so we don't have sort of those basic new telecommuting type of structures built in for technology. Other questions? If not, I'll turn it to Ms. Starkey with Public Affairs. Or I'm sorry.
Hello, I'm Jennifer Starkey. I've been at Webster Grove since May. So as Erica mentioned, my office is one of the newer ones. It was, it was created in May. The city felt that they needed a full-time person handling communications. And that's something that a lot of the other municipalities nearby have. Maplewood has someone full-time who handles community engagement. Brentwood has a full-time communications person, as does Kirkwood. I think Rock Hill and Shrewsbury might not yet, but, but Baldwin and Olivet and Creve Court, they all have a full-time communications person. So it was important that Webster did that to kind of be competitive with them and make sure that residents were getting all of the information that was important to receive. So I guess we'll take a look at the first slide. I am a part of the Finance Administration Department, so I'm in Office of Public Affairs and Engagement. I'm the Director and then Customer Support reports to me. So that is the three individuals who work at the front desk downstairs and handle a lot of the phone calls and people that come in. It's kind of a community engagement, community support position. So there's three full-time employees in that area. And then one of the first things that I had done when I came was put together a strategic communications plan. And that is available in the Document Center online in the Public Affairs folder. But it kind of outlined some of the, the core functions of the department. So just to kind of go through those, Strategic Communications is kind of the main one. The council is in the early stages of putting together their strategic plan. And my role will be to communicate what is in that plan and to make sure that the city's communications are, are working with that plan and at working against it and kind of organically all working together to make sure that the community is aware of what the strategic plan is and that everything that we're putting out into the public is a part of that. Brand management and, and what that is, I mean, you can see the, the Webster Grove's logo throughout the presentation. We just completed brand standards for the organization. So that's just coming through and making sure that the official things that we send out have the correct colors, have the correct fonts, that they all look official, that if you are at home and a resident, you get a letter in the mail, that it looks like a professional piece of publication that, that you're sure is from the city and not, and not a scam or anything like that. We're doing a lot more of our communications electronically than print. So a lot of that brand standards was making sure that our, that we have electronic templates instead of just having paper letterhead, that we have electronic letterhead and that it matches our website and all of that. Communication support for departments is another one. If there is Christmas light recycling that Public Works Sustainability Commission is doing, that I can help promote that and put that information out there into the public. If the Parks Department needs the ice rink schedule shared, I can help them with that. So just kind of working with those individual departments and making sure, um, Public Works often, if there's a street closure, you know, because of work that's happening, I can make sure that that's out on social media and that people are aware. Community engagement, that can take many forms depending upon what the project is. But surveys, we saw that, there was a fire chief survey. There was a survey with Douglas Hill. The Douglas Hill Community Event was another one. We're hoping to do a lot more community events and surveys and phone polling and different things like that, depending upon what the project is, to make sure that the community is engaged, that they know what we're doing and that they are be able to share their voice at, at the best time for them to do that. Crisis communications, that kind of goes without saying, but if there was, you know, a citywide power outage that lasted for a week is just working with, with the, the council and the mayor and the city manager and making sure that we are getting the right information out to the public and that the public knows where to go and that they know what to do. And, and kind of mitigating the crisis as much as we can. And then advocacy communications, just kind of working with the state of Missouri and any other legislative, larger things that need to be done through St. Louis County or the state of Missouri and working with that. And just some of the tactics that I used to do that, I handle the social media. So we are on Twitter, we're on Facebook, LinkedIn, Instagram. Nextdoor is another one that we're using. So being the official voice on those channels and updating that information. Media relations, primarily working with Webster Kirkwood Times based on where we are. But there's been opportunities, of course, with other things, the goats, I think was our most popular media story of the year. Literally every outlet in St. Louis contacted us and wanted to interview Scott for that. So working with those on those fun stories and then working with, you know, Post Dispatch and their Realtor and Business Journal when, when Douglas Hill and those kind of decisions were coming up. So working directly with the media and making sure that they are speaking to the correct people in the city and that if they want to talk to the mayor, kind of being the go-between and setting that up. Writing, so writing articles, invitations, creating and helping out great presentations like the one that you're looking at tonight and other communications needs for city leaders. The website, I work closely with Jen to make sure that that is updated in all the different areas. And we're going through a redesign. We're kind of at early stages, but I'm hoping that that'll be done sometime in late spring, early summer. The organization that we do our website with Civic Plus, we had an, an upgrade with that. So it's not something that's costing the city any extra money, but it'll kind of take it to the next, next stage and, and making sure that everything that we have on the website is kind of in the easiest way divine for people. And then event planning and promotion, the community engagement event at Douglas Hill, planning that. We've got some other things that are going to be coming up in the spring and working on those and, and helping others. So that is kind of what the Public Affairs and Engagement Office does right now. Do any of you guys have any questions?
Yes. Can you share with us, you mentioned the strategic, excuse me, strategic planning goals. Is that an internal staff working on that or do you have a committee working on?
The, the city council.
Oh, the council.
Yeah, the council, they're, they're at early stages. They've had, I believe, two meetings. Or yeah, two meetings to, to kind of outline the, the council goals and then when new council members and.
Can you share what those goals are?
They have not established the goals yet. They're kind of in the early stages of figuring out which direction they want to go to. They have some ideas. There's, there's previous goals that are online.
That's great.
And, and I'm sorry, I don't remember them, you know, but there's one that was, you know, housing and, and different aspects of that. And those are, I believe, eight years.
Twenty-eighteen.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Dr. Peoples.
Yeah, thank you if you don't mind. So city council is working on it. And so I did a couple of presentations. We looked at some of the community demographics as well as our employee demographics. Council engaged in some SWAT exercises, the strength weaknesses, opportunities, threats, as did some of our employees. And so we put those together, really overlaid them to see where the commonalities were as well as the differences. And so next steps really are to, to move forward, for council to determine how they want to do that. Do we want to have a consultant? Do we want to continue to do it in-house? Do we want to wait until a new council is seated? Do we want to, how do we move forward? So there's a lot of questions that are going on. And then of course, we had a Douglas Hill in the midst of that. So we're getting back on track with that, but the strategic planning is quite exciting. And as, as everybody knows, the strategic planning, it's almost doing two plans because we have the internal organization that we need to take care of and how do we operate as an internal organization? And then what is the strategic plan in terms of the city? And being the city municipality, we certainly have a large role in that, but not necessarily with all aspects. So we also want to get a lot of community engagement and that's been very important to council, to learn from the community. What do they see as the, as the priorities? So it's moving.
And that was the housing one kind of sticks out to me because I remember that that was one of their goals. And Douglas Hill and the duplex ordinance, those were kind of things that kind of flowed from that. When that was one of their strategic goals, those projects kind of came as a result of that being a part of their strategic plan. So the goals will, will begin projects and then I will help to promote those projects.
Yeah. Do you recall any of the other goals besides housing?
Diversity, I believe was, yeah, increasing and promoting diversity throughout the city.
And they were priorities and I can't land on the names, so I want to keep them away from goals. But the top things, because they haven't laid out what those goals will be yet and the action steps that go with them. But diversity, inclusivity was certainly one from, on both the council and staff side. Let's see.
Financial stability.
Financial stability.
Supporting the arts.
Oh.
Public infrastructure. There were six of them. They're the, the visionary priorities. And so they're on the website, I believe, under the council tab. So it certainly can provide them for the candidates if you'd like them.
Okay, great questions. Thank you.
Can I just make one comment, please? Douglas Hill and that project predates those, the, the initial discussions predate those plans. So they, it didn't come out of that process.
Okay, okay. I apologize for that.
It's okay.
Thank you. Back to you now.
Good evening, everyone. I suppose we don't want to look behind this. So we are going to talk about the city budget one-on-one. So this is a very brief understanding and overview of how the city budget works. For those of you, everyone here, you can see this graph here represents our revenue distribution across different parts of the revenue to the general fund. And then also a credit to our finance team led by Marlene Sherman. This is the GFOA Triple Crown, which we won this past year for excellence in our financial reporting, including the annual report, the popular report and the budget, the budget presentation award. So credit to our team and finance. Our fiscal year, which is very important, is July one to June thirty. So we are entering the budget process this coming spring. The budget process consists of a couple of different actions. The appropriations and revenues, that is the budget, are set by the council under a resolution to adopt the budget. Salary ranges then flow from that. You make an appropriation and the, for salary funding. Salaries by charter must be set in the ranges by the council. So that is done by ordinance. And then the property tax rates, minimize this so you folks can see, are set by council action a little bit later for the implementate, for the imposition of the law. So we set the property tax rates for the city, meaning we, meaning the city, meaning the council has to take action on those ordinances. So it is part of the budget as part of the revenue stream. Sales tax rates remain consistent unless changed by proposition or state mandate in some way, shape or form. So use tax would be a classic example. Nothing will happen with the use tax as a possibility until such time as the election, the electors say, yes, we will implement that tax on ourselves. We will then file the paperwork with the state to implement the use tax starting on January one of twenty-twenty-three. So we have a couple of important things for you to note. We have a lot of funds here at the city of Webster Groves. And that's not a bad thing. We are lucky to have many different revenue streams. Oftentimes many revenue streams mean many dedicated purposes of funding. You've heard about some of these from all the departments. Most of our funds are governmental funds. And so there are four major categories, the general fund, which is the largest and the most discretionary unrestricted fund for the city to use. That is what pays for most everything that happens at the city. And then there are special revenue funds. They are special revenue because there are certain revenues that come in as a part of taxation as elected and they must be spent in certain ways by the state mandate. So the three business districts each have a fund and they, there'll be a special tax. There's the public safety tax and street improvement. Now the expenditure there of those funds must be within those areas, but it is pretty wide in terms of what the expenditure can be. You know, it matches up with the name. The old Webster Business District, I'll use that as an example, can tax itself and it does and creates a fund. But within that fund, they can do many different things, lots of things within that, as long as it applies to that district. So the beautification efforts that happen, we can do facade programs, we can do marketing and advertising. It's not just, please put up streetlights. We can do many different functional things. When you look to the capital projects grant, fund programs, those are much more restricted in terms of their expenditure and how they must be used. Capital improvement must go towards capital and assets. So things like fixing the roof here at City Hall, we need to, we need to build a new building or build an addition to a building, a capital improvement fund is very likely going to be used. Park Improvement, limited to Park, Parks is through the name. Stormwater improvement must be about stormwater usage. Sewer lateral fund is about sewer laterals. The grant fund is, you would think might be a special revenue, but often we put it in the capital projects because most often our grant funds are coming in for capital project improvements. So, and then the new Firehouse Number Two Fund, again, the voter is elected to have a bond. The use of that bond is to build and pay, you know, it's to, obviously we borrowed money, the bond, to build Firehouse Number Two and the, that fund will wholly go to pay back the construction and bond on that for the firehouse. We then have a debt service fund, the general obligation debt fund, and that pays debt service on debts owed by the city. Fiduciary funds, we have one that is the city's and that is the police and fire pension fund that we receive funds on. It's a fiduciary fund because obviously it is a liability for the city to hold that and we are providing those funds to fill our pension obligations. We are also the fiduciary agent for the library. We do not operate or control the library, but we do hold funds. We manage their payroll. We run their books for them. Again, but that is the library board's decision, but the council would set the tax rates as the fiduciary fiscal agent for the library. So they're, they're, they're an independent status in the way they feel and operate their connection with us. But we do have a connection to the library here at the city. So we have city revenue streams. We have property taxes, both commercial and residential real estate and personal property taxes. Many different, we call it intergov, intergovernmental revenues. And these are a wide area, county road and bridge tax, the cigarette tax. If another government is collecting it and is the basis for input, imposing that tax, that comes through that, that line item. So the cigarette tax adopted by the state, cigarette tax, that money is distributed to us. It's an intergovernmental revenue. The sales tax, we have the municipal sales tax, which also includes the county's pool sales tax. We talked about that often. Licenses are things we sell, you know, in terms of a business license or a contractor registration. Inspection fees when planning and development folks are doing occupancy permits and inspection permits and fees, public works the same. That's a revenue stream. Utility taxes are electric, gas, water, telephone, grocery receipts that are paid. Utility taxes and sales taxes make up our two biggest revenue streams in the general fund. Fines are court fines, parking fines, things of that nature, charges for services, services we provide, the ambulance charges. When we go out for a service call on an ambulance, that goes in that revenue stream. Recreation fees, pretty self-explanatory, Mr. Davis's department and fees collected for classes and such happen from that stream. There's and then other income and other revenues included in the streams in the budget. So this is our budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-two by the numbers. Twenty-two, twenty-four million in all funds. So all funds means all those funds that I mentioned. The total amount the budget calls to take in is twenty-four million and to spend is thirty-point-three million. The general fund, which again is the, the primary driver of the budget and what you will spend most of the time in budget discussions looking at. The revenue is set at seventeen-point-one and the expenses were appropriated at nineteen-point-four-seven million dollars.
And that's included in the, like the general fund? And that's included in the, like, the general fund is included in the all funds as well.
That's correct. So all funds would represent the general fund and the other funds. We always also break out the general fund because it is the most discretionary to you. So. Meaning that the council has the most ability to change and alter funding in the general fund. In the general fund, these are the expenditures by function. So these are some of the offices, small offices are combined. But as you can see, over half of the general fund, 54% goes to the public safety function between fire and police. Planning and development is a 4% share, parks and recreation, 17%, public works, 11%. Much of public works budget also is drawing on other funds. So this, again, not the total for the department. But really look at within the general fund, whereas police and fire are very much in the general fund compared to other funds. Not completely, but very much so. Finance and admin is a 10% function and executive and legislative at 4%. Uh, planning and development, finance, admin, exec and legislative are almost, they will always be in the general fund. Unless there is a very particular purpose to be charging over to another fund. By the type of expenditure, this is our, our, our distribution of the general fund. So the general fund, 76% pays for personnel costs. I want to be clear, that's not just salaries, that's all the fringe benefits. The, the provision of providing people, hiring people and providing all those costs are 76%. 2% is the capital outlay, a little bit of general fund goes to capital. 4% is materials and supplies. That's the part of the budget where we buy stuff that we need to do work, paper, pens, computers. Contractual services are not only the contract with a person who may be like our attorney, but also a contract for a service. So, uh, we have an, a system to put our financial system in, that's a, the software is a service. That is in that bucket is a service provided to the city, even if it's not a person on the other end, if it's a product or a, a service in that regard. So if you did watch the council meeting last night, we talked about our five-year plan and that is, uh, all this budget information is online. The five-year plan will be online tomorrow. We had to make a, just a few contextual edits to it. I presented, uh, three different charts that are now in this one chart. And so I want to show that this is the last five years back to fiscal year 18. Uh, the three types of, these types of expenditures, so capital, contractual services, materials and supplies, personnel services and all the other expenditures. And really to show the trend of our cost growth, right? We're seeing costs in the general fund increase. Not unsurprising, costs keep, continue to go up, but there is a trend issue here. And I'm going to, as I go to the next slide, you'll see this. I combined the expenses with revenue. And so the, since fiscal year 18. This orange line is the budget expenses. And so I want to be clear, these four years are actuals. So that's the actual amount of money we spent in those four years. So you can see the orange line, the expense cost of the city government. And then the budget for this year is here. And this gray line is revenue as the budget expected and with the transfers. So meaning the unique, using of the fund balances that the city has. We have these, you know, dip in revenue here in 20 as COVID comes on. A massive increases because we put a bunch of money from the fund balance in and received the cares money. And here's the budget for this year in terms of revenue. But when you take those transfers out, don't use the savings funds, the rainy day fund. This is the real revenue trend of the city. And so as we talk to the, the current council and whoever is elected and about this budget. We have a structural issue at the city between this widening gap between expenses and revenues. Now, that is not to say that we are bankrupt, we are not, you know, we have a healthy fund reserve still. We have lots of money, lots more than other people have. It's less than it has been and I'll get right to you, Ms. Beck. But it's, but my point being is that there is a structural issue to address. Because if this gap continues to widen, that's the structural deficit that's laid in over time. So, Ms. Beck.
Could you share with us what the, uh, reserve revenue was from 2018 to what it is to 2021? How the, how the reserve has changed?
I, I can share with you, yeah. So the, in 20, if you're asking about this budget at the beginning of this year. We estimated the budget, the general fund balance reserved to be at 8.9, I believe. Uh, I do not know what it was in 18 off the top of my head. I certainly can provide it and it's in each budget book for every year. So I can provide it if you wish.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So I bring that up because I encourage you to look at the five-year plan and the budget page. Obviously the budget will be in development and we're going to talk about our process here. Um, is in development over this coming, uh, first quarter and into this next, uh, next quarter. By the way, I just want to, this is a great quote from Walter Riston, who's a former CEO of Citicorp, helped solve New York's bankruptcy. Uh, he was the, uh, man who helped create the municipal, uh, corporation there. But every, every line in the government's budget has its own constituency, right? So this is the problem of budgeting that we're, we're seeing is we all have an interest in a way the government spends money in some way. Uh, and so we have a values proposition that's in every budget. And so as we deal with that structural issue and all the, the concerns that the city may have or desires the city may have. Uh, we have to look at those values and that's your, if you are elected to council, the council's job to make those value-based propositions. Our, our process this year, we are going to start a little bit earlier. We'll be starting in January with our budget kickoff with the departments. So usually we start in February, start in January to get input from the departments and have them enter their data. Uh, we will be utilizing the balancing act tool, which if you watched, uh, the presentation at council last night for ARP. Uh, is out there and I'll talk about that in a second. Uh, but we will anticipate on the first day for the new council, at least delivering the budget. It'll be a busy day for whoever is elected on, to the council. Uh, but we do want to get the, the budget to you because we do have to have the budget adopted by the end of June. And we want to have an appropriate time of discussion and dialogue and also for your own amendments. The city manager, as you saw from the charter and through my office, has to provide a budget to you. But once it's yours, it's now yours. And so if you want to make changes to the budget from what's recommended. That process can, can go through and we want to make sure there's adequate time. So we've added and ensured that we've got the May period and the June period scheduled for you to have reviews of the budget. But also to propose amendments to change things and such, uh, throughout before the beginning of the fiscal year. We are by law, we do need to have the budget in place at the beginning of the fiscal year so that we have a budget. So. Um, so these are dates, we, uh, the budget page will have our budget timeline published on it as well on the website. So you can see all this information as you go about, uh, the, the time ahead. So I will turn it for questions and I'm. Oh, sorry, I was going to mention ARP. So thank you. As I almost forgot, the American Rescue Plan, if you're not familiar. Uh, the city of Webster Groves is receiving $4.6 million from the federal government. Uh, there are certain strictures on that money that are required to go in certain areas. Uh, excuse me, to, on how that money is used, I should say. The city though has some great latitude on within those bounds, how to spend that money. So we are at this point, this coming week, going to be launching our balancing act tool. Which is an opportunity for members of the public to go online. It's a tool where I think 62 at this time, it'll probably be a few less when we launch it. Ideas have been put on to this list and you can increase funding or decrease funding for those options. So to the culvert at Gore and Kirkham. If you wanted to use federal funding for that, that operation, you can, you know, add money to that or take money away from it, determine your level. And as long as you spend only $4.6 million, it'll let you submit that input. But the difference is of those almost 60 items, they cost over $11 million, the way we've entered them. So you're going to have to make the same kind of value-based op judgment as, as a member of the public that as a member of the council would have to make. I really like A and B, but I can only afford A. So how do I, you know, what's the compromise that we make, uh, to fund these things? So that's a public input tool and then this council that is currently seated and the next council will have opportunities to make decisions about spending. That 4.6 million, again, within the federal constrictions, but, uh, it's a very, there's some very wide areas in that to use for those ones. So. I'll turn it for questions.
So I have one question, maybe a little off subject, but. So I know the city uses New World, the New World system.
Yes.
Does the present council members, do they have access to that, uh, New World system?
Uh, no. So I don't believe they, council members have ever had access to the New World system.
Thanks. I, I was just thinking it would be helpful because sometimes you, you don't know what you don't know, basically. And if you could see some of those line items and expenditures and even revenue. Um, number of permits processed, et cetera. I would think that would be a valuable tool, even if it was in a read-only, uh, mode. Uh, to be helpful in making decisions and even direction.
Sure. So the, the, the budget document that is published will always have those line items and those classifications. So when we go back on the budget, I'll pop back here. These functional, uh, documents right here are always in the budget. So you're correct, the line items, because they, you know, just one department. Um, when I run the full line item report, it's about 60 pages. Uh, and so there are many different areas of line items, some of which are zeros and, you know, such will be, uh, but point is well taken.
Thank you.
Ms. Beck, if you look online at the budget tab, that's, uh, you'll find New World reports just directly taken out of there. Some of the items that are currently there. So we're doing a lot, uh, more than has been done previously to bring transparency to those budget items. Which is also really what Balancing Act that Mr. Peterson talked about. It, it really shares and that, you know, while those decisions are still left to council. The transparency there is, is there in terms of the options that the city has to spend it on. And then of course, getting the public inputs, but you'll find a lot of the reports, I think, that you're talking about online.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you for the question. Other budget questions?
So, did you say that Balancing Act for ARP is going out next week?
So, uh, yes, so I wouldn't, we, we would definitely have it out by next Wednesday at the latest. So, uh, we have city chat scheduled and so we want to be able to highlight it, uh, for the city chats. So we will have it out, um, and, uh, get just some edits. We heard some great feedback from council last night. So going through again, but also issues like the cover, I'll just be very clear about cost increases. You know, 1.25 even for the element Kirkham Culvert is going to be an under budget or an underwater cost already. Meaning that costs have gone up just since budget creation to now on those types of materials with the issues we're seeing. So we're, we're going through and double checking numbers to make sure we're providing a reasonable expectation to the public on what these items will be costing.
Can I follow up on Balancing Act? The February, March tool for the budget, will we have, will you have taken out of circulation the ARP? Are you going to have Balancing Act up for both of them at the same time?
It's a great question and I think, uh, the council can certainly give some direction. I, you know, I, we could have both of them up because they are separate tools. Uh, you, you're getting a discrete link to each of them. So you could have ARP up and have the budget one up at the same time. Uh, there'd be different tools, but, uh, again, that depends on the council telling us, the current council, that is. You know, how soon they would like to make appropriations out of ARP.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Um, so question, last night you mentioned the audit.
Mm-hmm.
Um, is, so there's a, is there a delay or a reason that there's a delay in the city's audit?
Certainly, yes. So the city is required to have an audit and the audit is underway. Uh, there was a balancing issue with the audit, simply the June checks could not be balanced. They were listed as open, but they had been reconciled. So we actually looked $200,000 richer than we were. We couldn't find those numbers. And so we had to go all the way back through, right through the actual check register, just like you would in your actual checkbook. Uh, so I want to credit Marlene Sherman, we, some weekend work and we found that and we're able to close it up. So, uh, you know, having a, having a 30-day delay on the audit is not material issue in that regard. So.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions, either from Zoom or up here on the budget? Hey.
We are on to round table.
So this really is just an opportunity for further discussion. It can be on any topic. Um, and we have stayed pretty true to time. We've got 12 minutes. So not to rush anybody, yeah. But are there any other questions that we can answer for you? Hey, I'm seeing no's. So again, I will thank each of you for being with us and invite you to join us again for the next scheduled one. The format's going to be the same, so it's not going to be new information. A lot of this process is meant to be for the public so that they also can know what the city does. But it's also to give you all an opportunity to ask additional questions. So the questions may be different. Um, certainly not mandatory, but we hope to see you all back. If you have any questions before then, uh, please feel free to ask.
Great, so thank you.
All right, and thanks to the staff. Thank you guys for being here.
And thanks, everybody.
Thank you all. Have a good night.
Okay, thank you.